I don't think you should actually, I don't think there should be.
Yeah, no, indeed.
I just want to force counsel to pay attention to things, it's really my goal here. That's what I'm trying to do is force like things.
All right, it's 6:00 PM. Do we have a quorum?
Yes, sir, we do.
All right.
Move on to item two, public comment. I do not have any public comment forms at this time. We can move on to item three, consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I will second.
All right, motion passes.
Item four A, this is an application for a zoning change request from agriculture to neighborhood commercial to allow for marketing the property for future commercial development, case number ZR 25-011.
My name's Robbie Highfield. I'm the senior planner for the City of Fait. I'll be giving the staff presentation for Ginn-Fait-Maine zoning request, project ID ZR 25-011. So this is the project location in yellow, the southwest corner of West Fait-Maine Place and Highway 66. It's two lots, there's an abandoned right-of-way, or an existing right-of-way that's vacant that sort of separates out the bottom corner. So this is a straight zoning request from agriculture to neighborhood commercial. The property's never been zoned, so it currently defaults to the agriculture zoning district. And the reason for rezoning the property to neighborhood commercial is to allow for the property to be marketed towards the current owner's targeted users, those being medical office, retail, and restaurant users. This is a location from the southern portion of the property on 66, looking northeast. As I said, it's two lots, currently just over half an acre at .65 acres. West Fait-Maine 66, zoned ag and currently vacant. The property does wrap around a existing home. That home is not part of this zoning case, it's actually a separate property altogether. So the approval criteria for zoning, does it meet the comprehensive plan and other adopted plans? Does it meet the character of the surrounding area? And are there any other factors required or allowed by Texas law and case law to consider? So approval criteria A, this property is located in the dynamic neighborhood place type. The comp plan defines dynamic neighborhood as including a variety of residential housing types at medium to mid-high densities and areas of supportive neighborhood commercial development. The place type includes single multifamily dwelling types as well as neighborhood, retail, and office uses. And residential and low-impact non-residential uses are closely integrated, both geographically and functionally with the downtown core. Representative land uses in this place type include commercial services as well as professional offices, both which are land uses that the applicant has stated they'll be targeting. And a representative zoning district is neighborhood commercial, which is the zoning district that the applicant is applying for. And this location is geographically integrated into both the nearby residential and the downtown core with its sort of central location acting as a transition. And so staff find that criteria A is met. As I sort of mentioned, criterion B doesn't meet the surrounding neighborhood. This property, you can see this more 3D angle of the property in yellow. You've got the Wood Creek subdivision off to the north and west, and our downtown core to the east, then what I refer to as old downtown core to the south, or old downtown, that more historic area. And neighborhood commercial zoning is a zoning district that does act as a good transition piece between all of these uses and with all of those surrounding. It's kind of geographically integrated into being compatible with everything on each side of it. So staff finds that criterion B is met, and criterion C is not applicable in this case. So as with all zoning cases, we're required to do public notices. You can see in yellow the properties that were noticed and the project site in pink. Nineteen notices were sent out. As of today at 2:00 PM, we received one response, which was voting against. And it was a short statement, so we just included the entire statement, essentially saying, don't want more businesses with more traffic in this area and fine with the house there. Want to state again, the house is not part of this, part of this, it's a separate lot. So sometimes we're able to do financial analyses, even when we don't know the users. In this case, just because of how the vast, just the different directions this could take, there's just not enough information for us to put together. We'd be making too many assumptions for it to be a valuable analysis. That said, generally, these types of developments do pencil out favorably, but again, we can't make a solid determination in this case. So staff's recommending approval for zoning case ZR 25-011. And I can take any questions now? I don't know if, I think the applicant's here, or after the applicant.
All right, no? Okay. Thank you, Robbie. All right, applicant presentation.
Just approach and state your name and address for the record.
The address of the property?
That's your address.
Tracy Ginn. My address is 1101 West State Highway 66, Roy City, Texas 75189. And I don't really have a presentation. I was told that I just needed to be here to answer any questions or field any concerns.
All right, so maybe you want to, here, I'll let you ask.
Yeah, this may be for, sorry, I didn't know if you had anything, so I wanted to let you, if you had anything. But I think my question may be for one of our planning department, but if they do develop something on there, I'm just confused a little bit by the second lot that sits next to that right-of-way. Like, can, I mean, could they use that theoretically for like, a driveway or something like that? I'm just a little bit confused as to why the second lot is part of the same application.
Yeah. So this property, so it's two different lots. Are you able to see my cursor moving on your screens? Okay, so there are some old right-of-ways here. It actually dates back to the 1894 plat of downtown that established these right-of-ways. You've got one that comes down here and one here. Believe there is some city infrastructure in there. There, there's the potential to discuss abandoning that right-of-way. Ultimately, that's a council decision, sort of a negotiation process. If that were to happen, ultimately, an easement would go across that property anyways because of the utilities there, so it would really only be a parking lot from a developability standard standpoint. But the applicant might have some, what she wants to do long-term, so.
Okay, thank you. That's really what I was asking, if that, I mean, it seems like that would be the roadway. That's all I was asking, thank you.
So I'm going to ask a question. This is the first time that we, that I, since I've sat up here, have had a zoning, just a straight zoning request change for the ability to market a property. Previously, Oliver, historically, from what I've seen, zoning comes in and they kind of know what they want to go there. And that's why, you know, it's kind of difficult, especially, the house in the middle of it is kind of what's really throwing me off here. But have you done any type of marketing for this at this point? And I don't even know if I can ask this question, but I'm just having a hard time with the market, the application being, to be able to market it.
Okay, so two things. I'm an active realtor, have been for almost 20 years. I bought the two properties, and you, can I answer your question at the same time? Why the two properties at the same time? Just because I own them both, and so I didn't see any reason to just do one of them and then come back later and do the other one. I have already started the process of discussing with the Robbie and the city, potentially taking in those easements. And at one time, it was discussed that those were already abandoned and going to be encompassed. I have also talked to the gentleman who is here today, and owns the rundown house that was referenced in the other one that my property kind of wraps around, about the potential of developing that and partnering up those two properties and developing it. Secondary to that, I have been approached by a medical office person wanting to buy the property to put in a medical office. However, everybody that wants to buy it wants to either do a 75, 90-day option period to try to do the zoning ahead of time, which it's my understanding they can't do anyway unless they own the property. So just to forego all of that, it's easier, but the conversation that I had with the gentleman that owns the house is to potentially develop it similar to, like, the three-story retail office building that's downtown. And do, but, you know, since, have been approached by three different doctors about just putting in a medical office there. And so right now, that's what's on the table, is just getting it approved and then selling it to them to put in the medical office building.
I appreciate the info that you can give me, that's great, thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Are there any alternative development that you see for in the future if you don't get the old house in the middle? What are you looking at in case that doesn't come through?
Same thing. So whether the house comes through or not, if the house came through, then it would potentially be developed together. If we decide not to develop it together, then I would still put a medical office there and then use the property next to it for parking.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? That look, in response to my answer, can you tell me what that was or what your hesitation is with that?
I don't know, I just, I see a lot of the older houses around here. And just imagining what that would look like.
Okay. But yeah, ideally, you know, facing 66 there is where the medical office would go, and then parking on the other side, and then entrance from both sides there on 66, so.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, public hearing. It is 6:14. Open up the public hearing.
I do not have any public forums at this time to speak.
All right, it is 6:14, we will close the public hearing. And so, any discussions, if not, look at taking a motion?
I have discussions.
Hey Robbie, I got some questions for you. I am, I am. So help me understand what I'm looking here at. So when we're looking to the north of the property, which is actually to the left, isn't it? Yeah, that would be the north, wouldn't it?
We're facing north right now.
Okay. So to the west of the property, those are houses, right?
Yes, these, this is west, those are houses.
And to the north are houses. And then the three properties next to the small triangle, second portion of the property, I know it's, I could probably see it, but I can't see through yellow. What is that zoned currently? Is that agriculture as well?
It's ag. Let me pull up a, it'll be a bit smaller.
Okay.
But this is the current zoning.
Okay.
Right now.
Perfect.
So all of this area is ag right now. And then this tannish color, tan yellow, is the Wood Creek subdivision, the Wood Creek Plan Development. This right over here is the downtown core. I'm actually right on the food hall right now, to give you sort of a idea, that's the gas station. And then this is the older And then this is the older downtown, you've got the air conditioning place here, this is Davidson.
Okay. Can you go back to the other map?
Yeah. Does this bigger aerial work, or do you want the?
No, I want the, I want the pinks.
Okay.
There you go. It's just easier for me to see, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, this is why I give you lots of options.
You know, I'm just, I'm struggling, only because this would be probably a lot easier discussion if that house has already made its decision. But putting a medical office or even, because it really could be a three-story, like a downtown, like the applicant said, it could go up to that three-story like in the downtown area, correct?
I would need to check, do you know what the height requirement is off the top of your head, Ryan?
I believe it's three stories in the neighborhood commercial. You know, I don't want to, I don't want to tell you the fallacies.
You don't want to tell me.
I believe it is, or I think it's like up to 40 feet.
Okay.
I think, I think your constraint would be parking when you have a multi-story building there, though.
See, my struggle is, is without that piece of property include, included, and let's say something doesn't happen right, you could potentially end with a three-story building in between all of these houses. And that's inherently where I'm having the struggle right now. And I, and I get it, it's compatible, but at the same time, will that enhance currently the surrounding neighborhood, which literally is surrounded by houses? So that's, okay, I'm thinking out loud right now, so, but that's, that's what I have. Anybody else?
Yeah, I'll, I'll tell you, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with the same exact thing, because a lot of pla, a lot of cities smaller, I mean, cities similar to our size, like have the same issue where they have like, some older homes around downtown, and you can end up with some really strange outcomes. And that's kind of what, like, I think we're all a little bit afraid of. It's not that, like, you know, yeah, I'll, I'll leave it there. I think that's what we're all afraid of, is you end up with a strange, where somebody then comes in and wants to, I'm, I'm not sure if there's anybody living there now, but i, i, if, if someone comes in and chooses to make that their family home, right in front of the office, like a medical office building, or whatever it may be, I'm not saying it's stuck to the medical office, but whatever it may choose to be, and that's just a really, really strange outcome. Again, if the house was together, if, if, if the house was together, the house lot was together, it'd make it a lot easier decision. So I think we're all kind of, just from the questions asked, we're all kind of struggling with the same thing, right?
Just, just for context, if I may, Mr. Chair, I did have an informal conversation with the owner of the property containing the house before the meeting. Now, it's just talk, it's just discussion, but they did indicate that they probably would be interested in, in pursuing a zoning change for that residential property as well, and maybe, you know, facilitating some sort of larger, you know, development. But again, that requires a formal application and the whole process. I just want to let you know that the owner of that property is here tonight and is very aware of what's going on and expressed that position to me.
So I'm, I'm going to make, just make a, a statement count. So, um, we, we need to be careful because we're, we're getting into a policy area. And, and I, I don't disagree with, please understand, I don't, but, but it's, we're, we're talking a zoning change. Council will go into more of the, hey, what, what is, or what will be approved on, onto and into that lot area? We're, we're just, nothing wrong with the question, I just want to make sure we understand we're not a policy board. That's all.
And Chairman, if I may, I also want to, as far as, since it seems like one of the things that's being talked about is scale, you, you do have to factor in the parking requirement here, right? This is a triangular, triangular lot, with or without the house, you have to, you have to fit in a nine-by-18 parking space that meets, and the quantity of that has to meet our, our park, our table with parking calculations. The uses in general commercial tend to be three to 1,000 square foot area, ground floor, or yeah, square, sorry, ground floor area, and in three spaces per every 1,000 ground floors. So keep that in mind, if you're, if scale is something you're talking about, you are pretty space constrained in this area. That's just, I'm not trying to lead the, lead the council in one thing, but if you are looking at scale and character, that is another factor in play here.
Yeah, no, great point, Robbie, thank you.
I just wanted to point out, I don't know if you need a second. Sorry, my first meeting. I just wanted to point out, the two lots to the left of the triangle-shaped lot are both currently vacant as well, so those do not have houses. I just know that was a concern, you were talking about it being right next to a house. Those two are vacant lots, so there's not a house on either of those properties as well, so, so I just wanted to point that out, if that makes any difference.
Okay. Anything else? All right. With that, then, consider taking a motion?
Motion that we approve, ZR 25-011.
I'll second.
Thank, thank you. All right, item 4B.
4B, this is an application for a zoning change request from agriculture to general commercial to allow for commercial use, case number ZR 25-013.
We got Ryan or Robbie?
We're, we're sharing the load here. All right, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning and Zoning Commission, my name's Ryan Wells, I'm the Director of Planning and Development Services here at City of Fayette. I'll be giving the staff presentation for the Lazo Property Zoning Request. This is project ID ZR 25-013. So this request is, again, what we call a straight zoning, this just is request for a zoning change from one zoning district to another, no, no bells and whistles on it. From agriculture, which is the current standard for that property, to general commercial, or GC. The reason for this zoning request is that the property owner desires to establish their business within the existing buildings on the property. The buildings were originally built to commercial standards, they've kind of gone between commercial and residential uses over the years, both before and after annexation of the property into the C limits. Because the prior commercial use of the property ceased to operate for extended length of time, which was a commercial business within an agricultural zone at the time, as a kind of a grandfathered use, meaning it's not compatible, a compatible use with the zone, but because it's been there for so long, you allow it to continue, and that's called non-conforming, or legal non-conforming. Once that use stops, then that non-conforming status ends and you can't start up another business that's not compatible with the existing zoning for the property. And so, that's why, basically, in order to establish a new commercial use on this property, the property owners are requesting this zoning change, because right now, because this property was never officially zoned, it defaults to the agricultural zoning standards, which don't permit, you know, a lot of the typical, you know, commercial professional services, businesses that are allowed in the general commercial zone. So here's an aerial of the property. We're just down the street on 66 there, near Robert Smith Family Park, so you just go straight north, couple hundred, actually, thousand-plus feet, and you get to the property. Some of those, those of you who have been here for a while would know this as the Tiara Thrift property, you drive by there, there's a sale sign there forever. And so that's, that's the property that we're, we're looking at tonight. So it's located on a single lot totaling 15 acres. It's located, again, on State Highway 66, approximately 270 feet north of East Willowbrook Lane. It has two existing commercial buildings, you can see those in the, in the image there. Notably, approximately 50% of the property is within the Zone A, 100-year floodplain. So there's a big floodplain that goes right through the middle of the property, kind of cuts the property into two. The existing commercial, or the existing commercial buildings are on the north side, it's all vacant, semi-wooded on the south side. And once again, State Highway 66 is on the western property boundary, on the east is, is more residential, like, portion of Wood Creek, and then there's vacant property to the north. So once again, for a zoning change, there are three approval criteria that we are looking at. First is compatibility with a comprehensive plan and other adopted plans. So this property and all surrounding properties here along 66 are currently within the rural reserved place type as designated by the 2021 Forward Fate Comprehensive Plan. The general commercial zone is not a representative zoning district for the rural reserve place type. And as you can see, based on the, the description of the place type, commercial isn't really a representative use unless it's, unless it's more of an agricultural-focused commercial use. So the rural reserve is, includes a mix of land uses such as farming, ranching, and other agricultural-related services, supporting farmsteads and limited residential estate. Suburban and urban development is prohibited in this place type. So, gen, so essentially, when we look at this from a technical standpoint, the general commercial zone is not identified as one of the zoning districts representative within the rural reserve place type. So our finding is, on this, is that it, the proposed general commercial zoning change is not in conformance with the comprehensive plan, as is shown in the future land use plan. Related to the character of the surrounding neighborhood, so if we look at the surrounding zoning districts, we have agriculture generally surrounding the property on the north, the west, and the south sides. To the, to the east, as indicated by the, kind of like, the yellowish tan, that's a portion of the Wood Creek residential subdivision, Wood Creek, I think it's Phase 6. And then, just a little bit to the south, on the other side of 66, we do have a, a small PD, Plan Development, excuse me, that originally supported the Woods Auto Collision, which is recently sold and, and redeveloped by Payne &amp; Sons. So there's a, there's a commercial PD across the street. So there's the, kind of, the landscape as far as the zoning goes. As far as the actual uses, related to the character of the surrounding neighborhood, most of it is rural, there's a lot of open ag land, there's a lot of open space, undeveloped land to the north. You have some large lot residential to the south, which is the Morella Estates on Willowbrook, and then there's another large lot residential neighborhood on Tony Lane, further south. There is some dispersed commercial in the area, though. There is J&amp;M used cars just about across the street from the subject property, again, Payne &amp; Sons Collision, just south of that. On the same side of the, of 66, further south, there's 66 Automotive, which is a full-service automotive service center. And then, further south, right there at CD Boran and 66, there are some large tracts of land that have been long-zoned as Wood Creek Commercial. So we do expect, and we have had, you know, cases come through and, and requests coming through for development of the properties there on 66. And so, there is kind of a, a slowly transitioning and growing commercial presence along 66 from CD Boran moving north. So looking at that, and then looking also at the zoning, we're kind of a little bit in the middle as far as the compatibility with the surrounding neighborhood. I can't say it's really a slam dunk one way or the other. There are other kind of small-scale commercial users in the area, but it's also, like, as far as the zoning goes, it's still a very predominantly agricultural zoning district. So we're kind of in the middle, we're not really finding that it's, it's a solid positive or negative related to that criterion B. Criterion C, any other factors, there's nothing that really pops out on this one, so we don't really have anything to say to that. We do send out public notices, we published it in the newspaper, we placed a sign on the front of the property, as is now required of us by state law, and then we also mailed out public notices to all properties within 200 feet of the subject property. That meant we sent 26 mailed notices out to all the neighbors. As of today, we did receive one response, that was against, in opposition of, and specifically that letter expressed concerns with business traffic impacting neighborhoods. I will say just factually, all the traffic would come off of State Highway 66, there's really no traffic that would impact neighborhoods, but that is what their concern was, and I wanted to accurately convey that to you. So in this case, the applicant stated that their current plan is to just reuse the existing commercial buildings for their business, and so there's no actual development currently being, being proposed. That doesn't mean that it wouldn't happen in the future, but we don't have any information on what that would be. And so we didn't conduct a fiscal analysis because there's no change in the physical built environment on the property compared to what's there now. So because of the findings of our, the approval criteria, we are recommending denial because there's the, of the incompatibility with the, the comprehensive plan. We did, again, find that there is some mix of compatibility and incompatibility with the surrounding neighborhood, but the comprehensive plan being as it is right now, we are recommending denial at the staff level. So that concludes my presentation, I'm happy to take any questions you may have. Thank you.
All right, thank, thank you. Autumn?
Yeah, I'm going to ask you a question, of course I am. Can you pull back up the satellite overview?
Sure, just one moment, please.
Obviously, when it comes down to it.
This one, okay?
Uh, no.
Or the other one?
Go to, the other one. Yes, this one.
Okay.
So the floodplain goes, is to the south of that building, right?
Yeah, I think there, yeah, you can see it right here.
Okay, so the building's on the top corner.
The building's right up here.
Very far away from the homesteads.
This is really, yeah, this is basically where they are expressing their current desire to do the commercial activity.
Okay.
This large floodplain is, you know, again, literally 50% of the acreage of the property, and this area down here is undeveloped. There is a sliver that does touch 66, so in, in theory, this could be developed in the future, but right now, the existing infrastructure, existing buildings up, are on the north side of the floodplain.
No, yeah, and, and, and I get it, I've been around as long as that building's been around, but I do agree with you, with the comprehensive plan as it is, until it gets updated, I almost hesitate making recommendations against that. Does that make sense?
That's your prerogative.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I'm in the same place, it just goes against the current FLUP, and I'm really having a hard time get over that.
You, I, I, that's fine, I also want to make sure you know that the applicant's here and they'll, they'll be able to express their position and maybe give a little bit more insight as well, so that's, just to make sure that you guys saw that opportunity.
Okay, sure.
All right, so applicant presentation?
Well, good afternoon, Commissioner, my name is Joanna Tumax, and I'm here representing my mom, the owner of the property.
I'm sorry, if you could give your address, too, please.
Address, yes, so the address is 6744 North State Highway 66. So I don't have a presentation, but just kind of wanted to comment a little bit more on the property. Whenever it was purchased, the previous owner did have something similar to the other businesses that are off that same street. And really, her plan was to just utilize and continue using that same property. It hasn't, it, you know, you said it's been there a very long time, but it's, it's actually not in any bad shape or form, and by the little that, you know, she's been trying to clean up that whole property, because I don't know if you've noticed, it was a mess, and, and I understand that the previous owners were an older couple, and, and it got to a point where they weren't able to utilize the property as they did. I mean, I went back on Google Maps to see everything that has happened in that, in that, in that property, and it has been used, and, you know, I understand there's that floodplain, but as far as it goes with that side, that, which technically ends up being like five acres. it's, it's been able to be used. And quite frankly, like, what we want to do is to, to grow the business. It's actually her business. I, I wouldn't put myself so much into it because I know it's mostly her. But, you know, have her business and with the potential, it has garage doors, just continue for the meantime, you know? And if, if it's something that she's able to grow, you know, along with whatever plans are for the city, bring, bring, you know, some commercial to that area since, honestly, besides the plant developments that really don't have that access through sixty-six, the other homes are dilapidating. The other homes that are right next to it are, I, I wouldn't even dare walk in there because it says, "Warning, don't go in." And, and it's, it's, you know, it's something that I don't see it, that property affecting anyone besides it's just being used. And it's fifteen acres that were purchased. And you all said it's been sitting there with that sign for a long time. And it's, she took the risk to purchase it. She just wants to utilize what's already there, clean it up. She has more than thirty years of experience in general contracting. So she, she knows who to hire. She understands that there's going to be a process. And we're, she's willing to take that risk. I really would like that help, you know, from, from the commission to, to be able to do so because she can't just sit on fifteen acres without being able to do anything. And, and, you know, it could be on, on the due diligence of, of the agent or whoever it was that, as you know, the city of Rockwall is taxing that part as commercial. So it could be that they didn't do their due diligence fully to understand that part. But at this point, you know, we're, we're not trying to put a Walmart in a flood zone. It's more of just utilizing that building. And I would really, you know, help if, if we could do so to, to generate something, be able to pay for that purchase because it was a big purchase and a big investment. Thank you. Any questions?
There, so any, any questions? What, what, what is the business?
So the property itself, it's, it, it's kind of hard to see through the, through those pictures. But it has two, I think, two garage doors that could be utilized for if it's a workshop or any of that form. So we would, she would ideally would want to market it, to lease that, that side and utilize the other part for her, I guess, as, as a hub for her cleaning business, which is a commercial cleaning business. So it's not that anyone would be coming in there or open for, you know, for, for use for just, I guess, walk-ins. It would be more of a come, pick up, leave, come and know where to go kind of thing. I, there wouldn't be more than two, three cars at a time there, so there's no additional traffic. And really, whatever, at this point, whatever we could accommodate and, you know, according to the city and what we could do as far as with what's already there, put either continue with leasing those, those garage doors. If it is for someone that has a, a small business in woodwork or if it is a mechanic or, you know, something that goes along the lines that we are able to do with the city. It's just, we would need to get at least that part. So to generate some money to pay for that property.
Thank you. Do you recognize that the property looks immensely better? I see a lot of work on the building.
Yeah.
So certainly thank you for, for that. So it's, it's so much better.
She's been there herself doing that. So that's, that, that's the biggest thing. We want to make sure it looks good.
Okay. Any other?
What's the quantity of the cleaning materials? Because those can be considered hazardous after a certain quantity.
I mean, honestly, as far as material goes, it's mostly just your brooms and mops. And as far as chemicals go, it's, I mean, besides your dish soap and, and material like that, all, anything heavy like that, it tends to be more on job sites of whenever, because it's mostly for apartment, brand-new apartment complexes. So a lot of times, those, those contractors have that if they need, like, waxing or whatever. They, they carry that material and we just provide the personnel.
No, no other questions? Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it's six forty-two, and we'll open up the public hearing.
I have one citizen who would like to speak. Alex Sullivan of two fifty-six Prince Lane. If you'd like to approach the podium and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hey there. I'm Alex Sullivan. Two fifty-six Prince Lane is where I live, but I do own J&amp;M used cars right there at sixty-six fifty-eight West Highway sixty-six. I am one hundred percent for exactly what you're doing. As far as traffic concerns, a small business is definitely not going to add the traffic that more houses or whatever is in the comprehensive plan would add to it. We've kind of, my family's owned that company and, and owned our residential property behind, on Prince Lane for almost thirty years now. That's been kind of a commercial district, you might want to call it, between you have us, the car lot, you have the body shop, you have the other mechanic shop across the street. I see no better use for that property than exactly what they're looking for. And I would hope that this community would want to rally behind a small business owner. I think we need more of that and less of bigger faceless corporate, corporations. As far as the flood plane goes, I can personally speak on that because my property runs straight in line across sixty-six with it. Yeah, when it rains a lot, we'll get a little bit of water. But it's not like a FEMA flood plane or anything like that. But as a fellow citizen and a fellow business owner, I fully support exactly what you guys want to do. And please come over and see me. If y'all need any help with it, please don't hesitate to ask. So that's it.
All right, if no one, no one else that...
No, sir, that completes it.
So it's six forty-four, we're going to close the public hearing. And further discussions?
Yeah, Ryan, can you, or, he talked about there's some more businesses along, and that doesn't really come through, I think, in the materials that we were sent. Can, I don't know if you can speak to, like, the, the additional businesses that are in the area along that, that kind of same corridor?
Sure. Can I get the presentation back up? Yeah, I, I mentioned it in the character of the surrounding area, but I'd be happy to reiterate kind of what we have going on there. So I mentioned it in, like, the dispersed commercial. So the gentleman who just spoke, he and his family own J&amp;M used cars. That's located right here. So again, like, right across the street, there is this commercial property. You've got Payne &amp; Sons Collision right here. This used to be called Woods Auto. It's been there for a long time. You've got the, I think it's right here. You have the, yeah, you have the sixty-six Automotive. Again, it's kind of a fixture in the community, a full-service auto body. And then all these properties here and here are already zoned Wood Creek Commercial. We just haven't had anything actually developed there yet. We did have a bank that was approved for this corner. Things got in the way, federal regulations, a lot of stuff. So unfortunately, that's not manifesting right now. But this is all already zoned commercial. It's just, you know, it's a little bit of a hike down, down the road from this property. So, and again, the, the other thing was, some of these are, are, again, those grandfathered uses. So these are zoned agriculture, but they're allowed to be commercial because they've been there for a long time. This property was in that same boat. But then our records show that there wasn't a continued certificate of occupancy for an actual, like, business on there. So that's why it's, it's not eligible for that nonconformance. So in order to operate the business that was described, you'd have to have that zoning change on the property in order to validate that or, or enable that use. So, yeah, I mean, all of this down here is technically a commercial zone. This is a commercial PD. J&amp;M Auto, again, grandfathered use in ag. And sixty-six Auto, grandfathered use in ag.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
My turn. Okay, so I have a question for you. Because this is obviously, you know, as part of P&amp;Z, we have very specific criteria that we're allowed to follow. And we know one of those criteria definitely is not met. Are there any other options besides this zoning change for her to be able to have their business, her business there until we have, or city council has the comprehensive plan updated? Is the zoning change the only option that this applicant has? We're in a pickle.
It is a pickle. This has been, I, I got, just to be candid, this has been a very challenging, challenging case for us. Because we're all human beings here, right? You know? We're looking at the difficulties that these people are, are facing here. Our job is to still be objective, though, and, and implement the plan as it is unfolding. But, you know, you sit across the table from somebody and they ask you what they can do, you try to give them the best information possible. I, I'm, I'm digging in my mind right now if there is an option. Perhaps there would be something like a temporary use allowance or something like that. I, I think really, in order to legitimize what they're going to do and the investment that they need to make on the property, the zoning change would be what would need to occur.
So would a specific use permit, you know, be temporary?
Specific use permit is not, does not enable this type of use in the agricultural zone. So the specific use permit is still governed by the Table of Allowed Uses in Article Four of the UDO.
Sorry, Carrie was looking at me, waiting me to ask my question. I, I guess, like, when we look at the FLUP, like, the comprehensive plan, like, what, I, I just wonder how, like, where are we as far as, like, how close, like, to changing over neighborhoods? Like, are we butting up against the line here? Like, what are we, like, what does it kind of look like?
As, as far as what the future land use plan looks like right now?
Yeah, I just, I, I know we're, I know, like, it, it's, I believe it's rural reserve, as it, as it says in the materials.
Yeah, this is all rural reserve and basically...
Like, where does that change? I'm, I'm just kind of curious, like, where we're at on the map.
Ryan, I have it up.
Okay.
I can answer that.
Yeah, thank you.
The, as I say that, it's not loading. Sorry. There it goes. Yeah, the, the crossover point is just north of the Wood Creek Commercial property on the north, the northeast corner.
Right here? Is that the change?
On that side, and then...
From suburban neighborhood? Yeah.
Yeah, it's suburban neighborhood there. Actually, no, that's a supportive commercial.
Oh, yeah, yeah, of course.
And then the supportive commercial goes up to Prince Lane.
Okay.
On the west side and stops there.
Yeah, so that's, that's actually relatively close. That's about maybe a little over three hundred feet from the edge of the supportive commercial district or zone, not zone, because it's not zoning, supportive commercial area on State Highway sixty-six to the boundary of, of the subject property. The, and then it goes then straight into rural reserve, correct?
Correct. It's rural reserve, everything, the Willowbrook, Tony Lane, and everything north of Prince.
Yes. And I, I got to say, we, we get commercial inquiries along this corridor a lot. And inside baseball, for whatever it's worth, and I, I wouldn't encourage you to actually use this as a, as a validation of anything, but we are starting up a comprehensive plan update next year. This will be a quarter that's looked at, that doesn't impact current conditions. But it is obviously something that we're, you know, mindful of as we look toward the future of the community.
Sorry, I'm, I was, it's like, you know, I'm trying, trying to think of my, my question. So could there... Along the lines, what, what could we, you know, approve? And then recommendation to council? Because that's, there, again, back to the policy board. So, you know, we approve, but, you know, could there be something that gives less, not that the city has indigestion, but less indigestion to the city that the council could go, this is approved, given this? Or, or the stipulation that upon approval with the future?
Oh, yeah.
I know, it's...
It, it, as a straight zoning case, there aren't really any, any circumstances where you can condition a zoning change. If it's like a plan development or something like that, where you're kind of, you're expecting to go above and beyond, then you can, can put conditions on it. Straight zoning, you can't really put a condition. If you're changing the zoning, you're changing the zoning. It would be subject to all, you know, if, if it were to change to general commercial, it'd be subject to all the standards for that zone. It would be subject to the flood plane regulations, it would be subject to setbacks, all of that. You know, the, the, when you have a, a commercial use, a budding of residential use, then you generally have higher buffering and screening standards, you know, to mitigate impacts to the neighborhood. But, yeah, I mean, a, as you all, like, I think, are, are struggling with, there are some kind of extenuating circumstances with this specific property. If it was like a, if it were just like a empty piece of property, I think it would be a lot easier a pro, a decision for you. But here we have a history of commercial uses. And then, you know, but, but as with half of the city, we have all these properties that are zoned ag just because that's the default, you know? So I, I recognize the, the challenges y'all are having here.
I, I, I'm sorry. I think, I think I have my, my, my ask. So, so this, this is, and, and again, they're, they're going to have their, their business that they're going to run from it. They want to sublet, or should say sublet, because they own it.
Lease.
Yeah, but they want to lease out bays for other potential businesses.
That's what they told us.
To come in there. So they have theirs, and then they want to drive some additional revenue to, to offset their substantial investment. And all of this stems on that area with how that, that area is for the comp plan. It's so, gosh.
You know what? I have another bit of information I'd like to share with y'all.
Sure.
That might be helpful for you. Because, again, there's a lot of moving parts here. One of the things that we made a determination and conveyed it to the applicant is that right now, the property is not platted, meaning there hasn't been a plat prepared by a surveyor and submitted to the county for, you know, and recorded to the county. That's a requirement for any development on property in the city limits, okay? There's also never been a flood plane study done on that fifty percent flood plane property. But prior to any development there, you, one would have to conduct a flood's plan study, map out the, the final flood plane, because this is all just kind of preliminary flood plane boundaries. So right now, they're only constrained, they're constrained to the existing footprint of those existing buildings to do anything currently without the additional investment and work that they need to do. If they wanted to add to the buildings, build a new building, they have to plat the property and then you do a flood study. Just want to make sure you're aware that that's part of the whole development process for the property. So, you know, just want to make sure that you have all the information that is needed.
No, that, which, which, which is great. I, I'm just, my, my...
Yeah, I, I, it's, like Ryan said, there, there's a lot of moving pieces to this. And, and it's like one of the only, I don't want to say the only property because I think it's, it's already happened twice tonight. But we're constrained by the, I feel like we're, we, we feel a struggle with the, the plans that we've been given and a lot of historical zoning issues that just are lingering. historical zoning issues that just are lingering way too long. Um, and it feels like we're having to sit here and struggle and, and don't, you know, I mean, people are trying to invest in our community, and we're not giving them a clear way to do it, um, and I'll leave it at that. Um, and we're really struggling, and it, you know, yeah, I'm gonna leave it at that, but that's, I, I, it's puts us, there's so many moving pieces to this, and I think this property's in a, in an interesting position, that it has had the historical commercial uses that, I mean, sitting across the street, you have a, you have a small business there. Um, so, but yeah, I just, I'm gonna put that, I, I just wanna get that on the record.
Any other questions or-
Can I say a word, or is it still open, or is it closed? Can I make a comment?
Public hearing's closed.
Let me say one thing, okay? I know the biggest struggle we're having with the comprehensive plan, right? We know that. I think we're very upfront and honest that that really needs to be, this is the time for it to be looked at, and hopefully we, that will be looked at very soon. But I'm also trying to, I don't wanna say predict, but kinda look at the surrounding area is, you know, everything north of Prince Lane is agriculture, and in the floodplain, is it also rural reserve above Prince Lane?
Yes.
So when this comprehensive plan goes down, the chances that those are, at least the where the existing businesses stand, staying rural reserve might change, which kind of changes everything. So are we allowed, as in P&amp;Z, even if it doesn't meet those three criteria, are we still making our obligation if we were to, if all three of those conditions aren't met, and we still wanted to vote affirmatively?
Ultimately, it's your prerogative to make an, a recommendation-
Okay.
-based on the criteria that you believe are warranted. The criteria should serve as your guide-
Okay.
-but there's always other things for you guys to consider.
And that's what I needed to confirm, is just to make sure that-
You're not, you're not mandated-
To follow those criteria.
-by the code or by the law to only make your decision based on the approval criteria.
Okay. Sounds good, thank you.
All right, with, with that, I'll take, take a motion?
Sure. I'd say, given the history of the lot itself, and then the low impact, I'd like to make a motion to approve ZR twenty-five zero-one-three.
I would like to second.
Motion passes. Uh, item number five.
Item five, Director of Planning and Development Services, report announcements pertaining to city activities, upcoming events, future legislative activities, and other matters related thereto.
Um, just a couple quick things. I was remiss in giving the information to our city secretary at the beginning of the month, but I will announce that October is Community Planning Month, so give yourself a pat on the back. Next year, I'll try to be a little bit better about that, and they call me a planner, man. Um, also, I'm, uh, I'm excited that, uh, I and our, um, planning technician, Sarah Juarez, are gonna be going down to College Station next week to attend the American Planning Association Texas Chapter, uh, State Conference. It's a great opportunity to, um, uh, you know, confer with colleagues from across the state, uh, learn about things that other cities are doing, learn about the best practices being employed both in, in and out of the state. Um, we've presented at past conferences, not this year, uh, but, you know, in the, in the future, I'm sure we'll be up on the stage again. So we'll be hopefully bringing back some good information, happy to debrief and share with you guys any, uh, any nuggets of, of wisdom or, um, opportunities for us to just continue to really do the best job we can here on the behalf of the City of Fates. So thank you for giving us the opportunity to continue to, uh, to learn and grow, and of course, we'll continue to share with you any, uh, you know, available opportunities to participate in these conferences, workshops, continue your, your continuing education, and cert, to be able to serve the board as, as well as you can. So that's it, thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Ryan. Um, if the board doesn't have anything else, take a motion for adjournment.
I will motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
We have a second. And, uh, seven oh-one.
We are missing a vote, so just ensure that you vote, please.
We got two.
Brandon, Teresa, or Terry, did y'all make sure to vote for the adjournment? We're missing one. There we go.
Okay, motion passes.
Now you're clear to leave.
We're all already gone.